Okay, we will come to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, September 19th, 2022. I would all ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, in a world that is certainly around itself and out in outer space and every direction you can imagine, we are very pleased that Batavia maintains its decorum and its law and order and its good feelings and its friendships and the understanding that we as a community are here, although sometimes we may disagree slightly, we are here to do what are always in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. And for that, we thank that blessing because it is, I think, ever important as we move continuously into the future. Tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. Also, we want to remember all those from our community who are sick or affirmed, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and allow them to achieve return to good health. Also tonight, we want to ask for a special sense of direction and vision and understanding by the members of the city council as they act on the items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of them is here to do what in their own hearts and minds is in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Your Honor, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rizzato?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Beck, I'm sorry.
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Fourteen to fourteen, your honor.
So let the record reflect that all members of the city council are either present or online zooming to be present for the meeting, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item four, which I'm supposed to remind everyone, if you're going to speak tonight to the city council, since this is going to be rebroadcast on BATV, that you please use one of the microphones so that whatever you're saying can be heard, because without that mic, you're not heard on TV, so please be remembered to that. Okay, moving to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda, do we have anything? I have some.
Yes, we do, your honor.
Go ahead.
I'm having an audio issue here, I'm sorry. We need to remove the executive session for tonight, and then we have item under Accept and Place on File, the Committee of the Whole Minutes for August 16th, there's a correction on that, so I'd like to move that to the regular agenda, put that under seven, put that at seven A.
All right, anything else?
Let's all be aware of this.
Okay, you have something more? Okay, moving, I would like to add one myself, and that would be item, I'll call it 10A, and that's right after the proclamation about move with the mayor.
Oh, your honor, I'm sorry, that's the peace day proclamation.
Pardon?
The proclamation, peace day proclamation.
Oh, the mistake, did you say?
No, peace day.
Oh, that peace day, yes. We got a proclamation, I'm going to read, that's going to proclaim the peace day on, what day is that, September 22nd, 21. So those would be the items I'd ask that we change and approve the agenda.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman Beck for the approval of the items, approval of the agenda as amended, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Fourteen, yes, no, no, none absent.
Okay, moving then to item number six, presentation of tonight's consent agenda, Alderman Chansett?
Yes, your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To Accept and Place on File, the Committee of the Whole Minutes for July 26th and August 23rd, 2022; the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for August 8th, 2022; the Building Reports from July and August 2022; and approvals, the September 16th, 2022 payroll in the amount of $986,464.27; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,595,797.30; city council minutes for September 6th, 2022; proclamation for approval, renaming of the government building into the Jeffrey D. Shelkey Government Center; Resolution 22-92-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Morrow Cerro Construction, Inc. for the City Hall Water Main Project; Resolution 22-97-R, approving an MSA with Carnell Cornabar and Associates Limited; Resolution 22-98-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number One with Carnell and Cornabar Associates; Resolution 22-95-R, approving a resolution to apply for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding for the Fox River Bike Path construction; Resolution 22-96-R, approving a resolution accepting public utility easement at 470 North Randall Road; Resolution 22-99-R, approving a contract with Ray's Electrical and Boring Services to install HDPE conduit at 135, or rather, 1435 to 1451 Latham Street Waste Management Facility for an amount not to exceed $31,856, which includes a 10% contingency; and Resolution 22-93-R, approving a change order to the electric conduit construction contract to install underground conduit and cable at the Windmill Cove subdivision in an amount not to exceed $200,000. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda as read, any additions, corrections, notations? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Fourteen, yes, no, no.
Motion is approved, fourteen, yes, no, no, and an absence. All right, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda, do we have anybody this evening that wishes to address this? All right, moving then to presentation about the retirement of Police Chief Dan Yule. You would make some comments?
Yes, please, Mayor, on September 12th of 2022, Police Chief Dan Yule retired with 26 years of service with the Batavia Police Department. During his time with the department, Chief Yule worked his way up through every level of the organization, continuously taking on roles of greater responsibility culminating in leading the department. At each step along the way of his career path, he demonstrated the highest degree of professionalism and dedication to the department, his fellow officers, and the community. Prior to his employment with the city of Batavia, Chief Yule served from 1991 to 1997 with the United States Marine Corps, where he held the rank of sergeant. Chief Yule later answered the call for service again, being deployed to Iraq with the US Army Reserve Illinois National Guard, where he held the rank of First Lieutenant Infantry. In total, Chief Yule served six years with the US Army Reserves from 2003 to 2009, and in 2009, Chief Yule was recognized for his service to our country as the recipient of the Batavia Police Department Patriot Award. Throughout his career, Chief Yule received numerous letters of commendation and recognition. Chief Yule received Officer of the Year Award in 2000. In 2008, he was awarded the Medal of Valor for successfully disarming a subject with a knife who had been threatening to kill his elderly parents. In 2013, he was awarded the Frederick G. Boehner III Award for his demonstration of loyalty, service, and commitment to the department and the community. During his career, Chief Yule served as a field training officer and later as a supervisor in charge of the FTO program as a sergeant. Chief Yule spent many years in the police administration, first as administrative sergeant and then as deputy chief, where he helped to shape the policy and move the department through implementation of innovative practices and new technologies. During his years as chief, the department faced the most serious threats to public safety perhaps in the city's entire history. In every case, whether it was civil unrest threats posed by armed individuals or a global pandemic, Chief Yule called upon his experience, knowledge, and ability to lead in developing plans and countermeasures to ensure that the citizens of Batavia were protected. He also succeeded in enhancing the already high regard the community has for its police force. While we are certainly going to miss him as he begins a new chapter in his life, we will always be eternally grateful for his leadership in accepting the tremendous responsibility that it was to be Batavia's police chief during these last five years. We wish the chief well, thank you for your service to the city of Batavia.
Well, Laura has done an excellent job of kind of outlining and wrapping up the career and the dedication and the service and the outstanding achievements which the gentleman standing next to me has attained during his time with the Batavia Police Department. And I just want to say that it's been an honor for me to be the mayor that appointed him and worked with him through a lot of different situations, some of which we can talk about and some of which we can't, because some of it is still kind of regarded as somewhat sensitive information. But I just want to say that, you know, there were a few things that Dan really did. The world got into, in the police world, they got into the idea that we should body cam everybody. This became somewhat controversial, and there were some places didn't want to do it, others didn't, and I'm proud of the fact that Batavia, I believe, was one of the early ones in this area to body cam their police officers. And so I think that speaks well for his leadership. Another thing that I've had other mayors in the area ask me about, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, they would come through Batavia, and the one thing that would kind of pop out at them is how well-marked the Batavia police cars were. There was no doubt that when you passed or saw a Batavia police car sitting on the side of the road, or they were coming by you, you knew that was a Batavia police car with the art and the graphics that were put on the car by Chief Yule. So he's done some stuff that other departments have looked at, and I think he's, a lot of his ideas have been borrowed and enhanced and taken by others and moved forward, but he really has been a leader not only in Batavia in the police world, but also in, certainly in the Chicago area, because he's put a few ideas on the street that are hopefully making this a safer world for the world to live in. So Dan, on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, I'd like to present to you this plaque, says, "City of Batavia, Dan M. Yule, Chief of Police, in appreciation of 26 years dedicated to service to the citizens of Batavia and the Batavia Police Department, September 12th, 1996 through September 12th, 2022, signed by myself as the mayor."
I just want to say that, first of all, thank you to all the current and former members of the police department that showed up tonight to support me. Thank you to the city council and the mayor for allowing the opportunity to lead the organization. I really do just consider myself very fortunate to have been able to start and finish my career in such a department full of great women and men, and to, for a short period of time, be able to lead the organization as well. I think the mayor has chosen very wisely in selecting my replacement. I think Chief Maslow will be the right person for the right time. He's done an excellent job with an excellent group of people. I think the future is very bright for the Batavia Police Department, so again, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, moving then to item number nine, I'm very pleased that this is happening. The, I guess it's now the Tri-City League of Women Voters has stepped forward, and they are moving around the area to present a brief presentation to the voters out there as to who is really going to be your people on the ballot, because in the case of Batavia, most of the people for state representative, state senator, or congressman, that's all changed. So Patty Lackman from, are you with Batavia League or are you Tri-City League?
We are Central Kane County.
Central Kane County.
Central Kane County.
Well, I really appreciate you coming down and volunteering your time to tell us, and those watching on the audience, about what's really happening on November 4th, because I think if this room's going to be a polling place, which I believe it is, we're going to have a lot of, I was here two years ago when there was a lot of people storming in here, and they only wanted to vote for one thing, and that was a repeated statement by a lot of people. I think this time, they're going to be screaming, where's Representative so-and-so, he's not, he or she's not on this ballot? And what happened, somebody's messed with the ballot or something, and there's legal explanations for all of it, and Patty's here to kind of hopefully squire us through this, so I appreciate you coming down.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me. We are the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. We encompass the communities of Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, Elburn, Hampton Hills, Maple Park, sometimes North Aurora and Sugar Grove. We have also claimed Oswego East High School as ours for the purposes of voter registration. It has always been the top voter registration location for the schools in our area, so there's a challenge out there. Anybody that can beat 107 students that we registered last spring at Oswego East High School during lunch hour in one day, the challenge is there. With the league covering this, sorry, with the league covering this large of a geographic area, we have members who reside in four Illinois Senate districts, six Illinois House districts, four US Congressional districts. It makes it very fun to plan candidates' forums before elections. And I would say, at this point in time, I want to say thank you to the city of Batavia for always opening your doors for us to be able to use the council chambers for our forums. Unfortunately, you're under construction now, so we have had to kind of ship our forums to a number of different locations. Most of the league of, the Central Kane County members, whoops, this is what George told me not to do, I asked him if he would be here to help me. Most of our league members reside in the newly-aligned 11th Congressional District, although we also have members in the 6th, 8th, and 3rd districts. So I'm going to show you a map, hopefully. This didn't work for the Historical Society, but it's working now. So this is the congressional map in Illinois, and I'm going to zero in on the 11th. So you can see, this is the 11th district right here. It goes from Romeoville, Lamont, Bowling Brook, all the way up to McHenry, Woodstock, and just south of Harvard, all the way west to Belvedere, and if we make it a little bigger, you can see how it impacts Batavia. So here we are in Batavia, and I will show you, I live right here, see that? And I live on Route 31, so I am just basically in the district. So we're going to make it a little smaller, and we are going to go to, now we're going to go back, we'll go to the, this is a little hard here, 6th. This is the 6th district right here. So you can see, some of it comes sort of close to us, and we have members that live like right here. Go back, go to the 3rd, or the 8th, I guess. And this is the 8th here. For Illinois Senate districts, most of our members live in the 25th, 33rd, and 42nd. So we're going to take a look at the Illinois districts. I live in the 42nd now. So you can see, this is, here we are, Batavia's kind of split in half. So I live where it says Herald Hall, Quarry Beach, live just right there. So that's Route 31, and you can see, part of us, part of us are in the 42nd, and then we're going to go over to the 25th, and you'll see, this is the other side of Batavia, 25th. So while I was in the 25th, I am now going to be in the 42nd. That's Illinois Senate districts. Illinois House districts, we've got 49, 50, 65. You can see 49 here, 50 here, 65. So this is kind of interesting how it just cuts right up almost Mill Creek and around all the way up Ingraham Grove. Oops, sorry. Try 83. I am now in the 83rd district, which is kind of like the guts of downtown, on the west side. So it's confusing, we all have different districts, and how do we know how we're going to find anything? We're going to, first we'll show the judicial map, this is really an easy one, although we always have to say okay to open it. The judicial map, because of the census, was changed drastically, where our 2nd district used to be 13 counties, it is now five. So it's, we have been reduced to Lake McHenry, Kane, Kendall, and DeKalb, and this is offering us an opportunity for the first time in a number of years to vote for Illinois Supreme Court and Illinois Appellate Court justices. Yesterday, we had a candidate's forum at the Batavia Library for the two candidates for the 2nd Illinois Appellate District, Chris Kennedy and Susan, okay, Abby, help me.
Balls.
Susan Clancy Balls, I should know that, she was our chief judge, and they did an excellent job. It is, has been recorded, and hopefully it will be on our website today and the Illinois Voter Guide in the future. So we are hoping to have the Illinois Supreme Court candidates, Elizabeth Rochford and Mark Curran, at our October 4th candidate's forum, which will be at the Geneva Library. We had planned to have the Supreme Court and the Appellate Court together, but one of the candidates was unavailable, and because we have an empty-chair policy, we do not allow only one candidate to participate. So here are our Kane County Board districts. A little closer to home, and very confusing, this map. And not coming up at all. There we go. So you can see, this is the whole county, and I am in, this is the middle of Batavia. This is Batavia right here, a lot of downtown, County Board 10. And what is, you need to do is go to the Kane County Elections website, and it will show you exactly where you are. So we're also hosting candidates' forums on Wednesday night for Illinois Senate 42 and State Rep. 83 at the Aurora University Cremey Auditorium, beginning at 7:00. We had initially planned to have the 11th Congressional District as well, one of the individuals was unavailable, and so we are trying to add that on our October 4th date. So how do I find out about my voting choices? This is a way to go check the maps, this is the Illinois State Board of Elections website, and it is an interesting website to try and manage. It will show you the maps that we just saw, and then you can go to the Kane County website, a little closer to home, and I want to know, sorry, my candidate list. So this is going to list all of the candidates that are running for election by party, and it, usually the clerk's office will put out a sample ballot in the local newspapers, and they come out usually about, right around the end of September. This will tell you all of the offices, and because I know that I am Congressional District 11 now, these are the candidates that I am looking at, Catalina Loaf and Bill Foster. Then I'm going down to Senate 42, and my choices are Paul Santucci or Linda Holmes. And for my rep district, 83, it's Keith Wheeler or Matt Hanson. Then it continues down, and it will tell me that I can vote for county clerk, county sheriff, treasurer, and then I'm going to take a look at my county board district, 10, and we see that one of my people is in the audience. My county board district rep, Brown, is up for reelection against William Tarver, so I have a choice to make here. So then we go. And I want to find out if I'm registered to vote. And I want to find out if I'm registered to vote. So I'm going to put my information in last time, and my street address. There I am. My husband and I are both registered. So this will tell me specifically where I vote on Election Day, and my choices. Currently, I'm in Congressional District 14, but I will be in 11. I'm currently in Senate, Illinois Senate District 25. I will be in 42, right on down the road. Tell me exactly. Very easy to maneuver. We also register voters, and as I said, we registered 107 at Oswego East High School. We registered 51 at St. Charles East during Senior Day of Registration. And we tried to register at the Corn Boil in Batavia till the rain hit. Tomorrow, we are going to both Webansie and Geneva High School. We've been a participant in National Voter Registration Day for 10 years. We have registered at the Landings, the Retirement Center out behind Walmart. We're going again. And we registered recently at Batavia Apartments, which was in conjunction with Northern Illinois Food Bank and the Aurora Food Pantry. But we do much more than register voters and host candidate's forums. The following picture shows the League at the Democratic National Convention in 1920 with a sign listing the policies they supported. The League also presented the same policy ideas to the Republican National Convention. Let's take a look at this. Aren't they cute? Child welfare, education, home and high prices, women in gainful occupations, public health and morals, independent citizenship for married women. Interesting, 1920. And here we are in 2021, rallying for Congress to pass For the People Act. We're 102 years old, and we're still kicking. Here we are, going for fair maps. We are against gerrymandering for maps. So we would not be in the situation we are today if we had the fair maps passed. So that's basically it for the League. Thank you very much. We'll take questions later.
Okay. Item number 10 is proclamation for move with the mayor. You got that?
No. Right before we do that, we need to go back to 7A that we forgot. We removed one of the minutes from August 16th and made it 7A. So we need to go back and vote on that, so we know what the change was. Dan, did you get your audio issue fixed?
Yes, I did.
Okay. You want to talk about that?
Yes, we have Cow Executive Minutes from August 16th, 2022. My understanding is that the library had a typo that they wanted to fix. Is that correct, Laura?
Actually, it's our typo. They just pointed it out.
Yeah, the library just pointed out a typo that we had. Imagine that, a librarian finding a problem.
Got it, okay. With that, then, with the change, I would moving approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
By all my chances, Second Ballotman Wolf, that we approve the amendments. What's the date again on that one?
August 16th.
August 16th, a meeting as amended. Any discussion? I think everybody understands it. Kirk call the roll.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, and an absent.
Motion for amendment is approved. You have anything else, Ballotman Wolf?
That's it.
Okay. Moving then back to the regular agenda. We're at item 10, which is proclamation, move with the mayor. Now, what this is, this is going to be this coming Sunday, the 25th, is it? I guess it's nine o'clock in the morning. You got the details? You want to read?
Well, you could head to our website and sign up for this. It is a historical walk around our downtown with Mayor Shulkey, pointing out many points of interest that, where Batavia has had an impact, important moments in American history. And the Move with the Mayor is a national program that's aimed at encouraging residents to get out there and exercise a little bit more than they have been. And as Mayor said, it's this Sunday, September 25th, at 9:00 a.m. We're going to meet at the Pegbon Center. The information is online. We ask that you register, just so that we know how many people to plan for, but participation is absolutely free. So we hope to see you there on Sunday.
Ballotman Moore?
Laura, do you know if we're going to have someone videotaping this or recording this?
Have we worked with BATV to get that? Okay. Yes, we are trying to set that up, but we intend to.
Yeah, I was thinking either BATV or the other company that does a lot of the video stuff.
Yes.
Might be someone that could help take this information and pass it on as a living history lesson.
Great. Thank you.
So what I know about this, other than I guess I'm going to talk for a couple hours, is the fact that this came out of the White House. They asked all the mayors in America to do something to encourage your residents to exercise, and if possible, to make it some type of an educational experience. So we came up with this idea that I could talk about the history of Batavia, because obviously I've co-authored the history book. But more interestingly, what I'm now finding out is I'm one of a few that are doing this. There are not a lot of other cities of which the mayor wants to spend his time or has some good reason to do it. I've had several of my peers tell me they may come to Batavia on Sunday just to see how this is all done, but they claim that they wouldn't be able to do, hold a candle to the Batavia Historic Program that I can talk about in my town versus what they've got in theirs. There's not much to talk about in other places. So I don't know what to expect. We're going to hopefully walk slowly. We're going to start at the Depot Museum, as Laura said. We're going to walk down and look at the Challenge Dam and the Challenge Building on the other side. We're going to visit all three of the sites of the principal windmill factories that were here back from about 1870 till about 1940. Now, we're also going to visit the site of the Newton Wagon Company, later Batavia Body Company, which was literally right across the street from here. And one of the things I'm going to do is, as we walk, is I'm going to stop for a minute, and I know we've got some construction going on here, so I may only be able to let people come in that front door. But by Sunday, I'm going to straighten up that picture that's hanging on the back wall there, that's hanging there, crooked, of, that's astronaut Buzz Aldrin standing on the moon the first time that the U.S. landed there in 69. Now, there's a couple of very interesting things about that picture and this room, one specifically, because in this room was a, in 1967, '68, was a company by the name of DK Aerospace, and they were a subdivision of Dunbar Capital. And they made components for the U.S. space industry. And so one of the things that they made when they were here is they made what they called the Flex Line, which was a fuel line slash electric conduit line that was in the rocket that took off from Florida and landed on the moon, and then took off from the moon and came back here. And so when the three astronauts came back, they all collaborated with an author, and they wrote a book, the three of them together, called First on the Moon. And in that book, it's right there that the Flex Lines were made in Batavia, Illinois. So we had that situation. Then right up the top of the hill, we have the Methodist Church. And about a day after this all happened in 69, we started getting calls from NBC and CBS and everybody else wanting to confirm that astronaut Buzz Aldrin's family was from Batavia. And I had at that moment, I didn't have any idea that that was the case. And lo and behold, it was true, and Buzz Aldrin's grandfather, from 1915 to 1918, was a minister at the United Methodist Church at the top of the hill. And he left the church in 1918 to become a chaplain in World War I. And so we had that connection. And then we look around, and we see other things that, you know, potentially had some role in this thing, so I'll be sharing all the moon connections with Batavia. And we got a whole bunch, and, as I've had one of our neighboring mayors say, you got all that, and I don't have a darn thing. So anyway, I just use that as an example. When we leave the Challenge, we're going to walk up the riverbank and talk about what was happening along here, and then we're going to go down and look at Shumway Foundry, where for the site where it used to be, which is right to the north of our water treatment plant. And for about 30 years, the Shumway family, who were there for 127, I think it was, they made the molds for the Academy Award right down the street here. And as I understand it, the mold was what they poured the Academy Award in to make it the hard dock, the hard statue that it became. And I guess when you made the mold and then you wanted the statue out of it, you had to break the mold to get the statue out. So we don't have any of the molds left. But we certainly made, for about 30 years, we made the Academy Award molds in Batavia. So that's a point of great interest. Then we're going to go down to the far south end. We're going to go down to Quarry Park. And I got to walk everybody up that bike trail there by the water treatment plant to get them up to the quarry level. I'm going to ask Chief Azazi if he can maybe give me a police officer for a few minutes down there to make sure we don't have any bicycle riders running into the folks on the walk. But anyway, what we're going to talk about there is, is that in 1853, we had a gentleman come to Batavia, and he built the house that's right across the street from the West Side Cemetery. And he had gotten the job to be the surveyor or the procurer of the railroad right-of-ways in Northern Illinois from Lake Michigan to the Mississippi River. And he had that job. And so he had a house built that, then they had to have railroad tracks put near it so that he could go every morning and get on the train and go to Freeport, or Galena, or Dixon, or wherever he was going. And so one of the things we had was, right next to this big, huge deposit of limestone on the south end of Batavia, right out along the river, we had this railroad track. And it was there to connect the Burlington Line with the Northwestern Line in Geneva and Aurora. Well, in 1871, they burned down the city of Chicago, and there was an immediate hue and cry for limestone to rebuild the city and non-combustible materials. And in Batavia's case, we had the railroad track right next to the limestone. And so we were able to mine and send into Chicago probably millions of pieces of limestone that were used in to rebuild the city. So that's one of the golden stories of Batavia's past. And then from that experience, we know that there was a great hue and cry for powerful, heavy men that could pick up limestone and move it, get it up to the railroad tracks. So the folks involved put out ads in newspapers over in Scandinavia, specifically in Sweden and Norway. And they encouraged all these Swedish gentlemen, Norwegian men, to come over to Batavia and work in this mine, and you'd make this great money. And it appears that a lot of them did, to the fact that this past year, I have been asked twice now to come and give 150th birthday celebration proclamations to the Bethany Lutheran Church at Lincoln and Wilson. And then we also gave one to the Mission Covenant Church out on West Main Street. Now, that's, they have a newer location, but their original location was over on Houston Street. And they both came and were formed because of all these Norwegians and Swedes that came into Batavia to work in the limestone quarries. So we got two churches that are still here today doing nice things in our community. So there's a lot of blessings that have come from a lot of this history tale. And I've just told you, if you wanted to know, I was going to say you don't have to come now, because I kind of give you the story. But that's what's going to be, and we'll talk about it, and I'll have a few pictures we can show and stuff like that. So the idea is to get you get some exercise. So we got some little hills to go up and down and whatever. So I think we'll have a nice time. So the next thing I knew is, we, under the consent agenda, we passed item 10A. And I want to read this, because I need to have you approve this. As you know, we're renaming the bridge out here. I guess we're going to call it the Batavia Peace on Earth Bridge. And it's going to be the bike bridge. It's right out here in the front. And I have this proclamation which I wrote, and I, hopefully, I've got this right. It says, "Whereas the now highly recognized Batavia Peace on Earth Bridge has become a regional destination for bicycle riders and daily path walkers to enable themselves to utilize the picturesque setting of the Fox River flowing through Batavia as a regular basis on their runs. And whereas it is fondly remembered that the goal of constructing a bicycle trail along both banks of the Fox River was originated with Philip B. Elstrom, Chairman of the King County Board, during the eras of the 1980s and 90s. It is recalled that Chairman Elstrom personally donated a slice of the river frontage which he owned on the east bank of the Fox River to accommodate the project. He was joined in that endeavor by Allen and Ken Larson, owners of the Larson and Becker Well Supply Firm, who donated the remaining portions of the east bank that allowed for the bridge to become a reality and set in place on River Street at its current location. And whereas it was under the creative vision..." No, wait a minute, I'm forgetting one here. "...whereas it was with the enthusiastic support of Illinois Transportation Secretary Randy Blankenhorn, who helped supply much of the funding from the state resources to enable the construction of the bike and walker's bridge to become a highly appreciated asset enjoyed by users from throughout Illinois on a daily basis. And whereas, under the creative vision of Batavia Barber Craig Fotos, proposals were highlighted to name the new pedestrian structure, the Peace on Earth Bridge, with appropriate signings and nighttime lighting to bring the entire experience into a whole new feeling of walking, riding, and running for persons of all age to utilize as they travel through our Batavia all year long. Now, therefore, to further the prominence and utilization of the bridge to a new height of admiration, it is recognized that on September 21st, 2022, it is going to be officially proclaimed as Peace Day. Under the leadership of Britta McKenna, a commemorative celebration of Peace Day has been created, offering memorable events and educations about the world's need for peace, and Peace Day that should be utilized and promoted every day of the year. And said celebrations shall be hosted around the Batavia Peace Bridge." And so this is the proclamation, and I'd ask for somebody to make a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second. Move by the Ballotman Wolf, Second Ballotman Sulfah, for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Thank you. Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no, no's, and an absent. All right. We now have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. Who's got that one? I don't have it.
I do, Your Honor.
You do? Could you read it, please?
A proclamation. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults, and the second leading cause among deaths among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the United States. And whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States in 2018 with an average of 132... States in twenty eighteen with an average of a hundred and thirty-two completed daily. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of one hundred additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the city of Batavia publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas global organizations like Hope for the Day and our local mental health partners serve on the front lines of the war that many still refuse to discuss, as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others, including taking care of mental health. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Jeffrey DeShelke, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-two as National Suicide Prevention, National Suicide and Prevention and Action Month in Batavia, Illinois. Signed, Jeffrey DeShelke, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Chanzet, second by Wolf, for the approval of the Suicide Prevention Proclamation. Any discussion? I would just offer that I know I've heard directly about several people in Batavia that were impacted by the passage of the City Council by this particular thing and had confessed or shared with others that they were very near killing themselves, but thanks to some action and foresight and some conversations that were created because of Suicide Prevention Month, they didn't do it. So I like to think that sometimes we do stuff here and it really has some nice ends to it, and this is one of them. So I would strongly recommend that we approve this. Any other comments? Court call the roll.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's. Okay, moving to item twelve, which is Main Street. And I see we have our executive director, Beth Walker, here with us. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I want to start off my portion today by thanking Nick Serone. He served on the Main Street Board for several years now, and he gave his resignation as of September first. Nick's been a great board member. He's helped tremendously with Cocktails in the Park, among other things, and I just want to thank Nick. And then Leah Lehman has generously agreed to be our new Main Street representative, and we look forward to working with her. But again, thank you so much to Nick. He's been really just a fantastic board member.
Thank you, Beth. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
If I knew you were going to thank me, I would have come down for a hug.
Oh, sure, Nick. Next time. Okay, so thank you, and thanks to Leah. Black Party was great. We had good weather, so our attendance was great, and we had, we sold nine hundred and fifty tickets. So those are not tickets, but wristbands, and those are only for people who are drinking alcohol. So we estimate we probably had over three thousand people. It was a great day. People had a lot of fun. We logged a hundred and thirty-five volunteer hours with thirty-one volunteers. We have our Shop Small Fall Promotion this Saturday throughout downtown. We have over twenty businesses participating. They'll be hosting pop-ups, spring special, fall specials, as well as just fall promotions. Bat Fest is coming up on October twenty-ninth, ten to two P.M. We are working on the Shop Small Saturday videos that the council generously funded. So far, we have nineteen filmed. We have thirteen coming up in the next week, and we're working to fill the additional slots now. So it's going over really well, and the businesses are really grateful to have this program offered to them. We have a couple ribbon cuttings coming up. Start Something Studios will have a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, October twelfth, at five P.M. at Twelve South Benburen. Katolpa Manor, a former boardwalk shop, is having their ribbon cutting the next day, Thursday, October thirteenth, at four P.M. at Ten East Wilson. And then finally, I have some people from Dinner Table, the Dinner Table Committee, that are going to come up. Bill McGrail, who was the chair for the Dinner Table. Amy Larson is the representative for one of the presenting sponsors, B.E.I. And then we have Joe Hunt, the president of the Batavia Food Pantry. And, do you want to talk, or no? No. So basically, Dinner Table was a great event for us this year. We raised ten thousand five hundred dollars that are going to the food pantry. So we're here to present that. Amy is our B.E.I. representative again. And thank you to our other presenting sponsors, Aldi and K. Hyalis Jeweler. So thank you. Do you want to say something?
Just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Happy Monday, everybody. So on behalf of the pantry, I just want to say thank you to Main Street City Batavia for hosting this wonderful event. Just a little bit about the impact that this has on the pantry. A forty-five dollar donation to the pantry helps us provide a family of four with a month's worth of clothing and food. So really, events like this really make a giant impact on our communities. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for helping keep our shelves stocked and our ability to keep serving the communities. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the City Council, I just want to thank you folks for everything you did to bring this whole thing together, you know, specifically in their Main Street's leadership, their cooperation. And this, things like you did does not happen very easily. There's a lot of things that can go wrong. There's a lot of weather that can come down and spoil us. I think we had a, this year specifically, we had some good relationships with the heavens above because it seemed like we got some rain, but right when we needed it to stop, it stopped, and it stayed stopped until the event was over. And then a couple of times, I guess it did rain. But we really were blessed to have the success this year that we did. And I think that helps create a sense of community and people seeing others in the community stepping forth and giving of themselves. And those are all nice messages that a community wants to put out. So I want to thank you for all you do to help us do that, because that's what makes Batavia, I think, a very unique place. So thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you for coming. Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to step up for the next.
Okay. Number thirteen is approval of a Class B five package liquor gas station and convenience stores liquor license application for Casey's Retail Company at twenty seventy-four Main Street in Batavia. Who's got this one?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
So the Batavia Police Department conducted an investigation and background check to determine whether the corporation for Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's located at twenty seventy-four Main Street, and the corporate officer and president, Stephen Brandlett Jr., would be suitable to receive a liquor license. The checks found no reason to preclude them from receiving one. So this is for a Class B five package sale license for gas stations and convenience stores. So I would move that we approve this license. And I would ask if the petitioner is available, that they could say something.
I don't think they're here.
I don't think they are either. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Chanzet, second by Wolf, for the approval of the Class B five liquor license for Casey's at twenty seventy-four Main Street. Just tell you kind of a humorous sidebar, Casey's has been suddenly building a lot of stores in the immediate area around us. So the mayors where these stores are popping up are talking to each other. And I'm not going to name the city, but the mayor says to me, "This is the most unique thing I've ever seen that calls itself a gas station." He says, "That seems to be a small part of what they're doing over here." He says, "They've got a great reputation now in town for making pizza." He says, "That's a, that's a big time deal with those folks." He says, "I got cars backing out and the road stopping traffic on the state highway because everybody wants to get in and pick up their pizza order at Casey's." So I don't know. This is going to be, as you know, out on Main Street there, they're going to tear down the gas station there by the car wash by just to the east of Holy Cross Church. So this is where this one's going to pop up, and that's a pretty small little gas station that sits there right now. But I think Scott Buning told me that this building is over five thousand square feet. This is no small building that's going to be in there now. So that's all I know about it. But places that have it say, you know, they don't, they sell gas, but that's all they sell. I don't think they sell you windshield wiper or port of oil or anything else. They're just there to get you gas and get you in there to do everything else with them. Interesting idea. It seems to be working. So we have a motion and second. Court call the roll.
Chanzet. Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizotto.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, none. No no's, one absent.
Yeah, Alderman Beck stepped out of the conversation. Moving then to, that one's approved. Moving then to item fourteen, which is ordinance twenty-two forty-two, conditional use permit for video gaming establishment in the downtown mixed-use district, Wilson Street Tavern at one oh five East Wilson Street, Mark Hogan applicant.
Do you have that, Your Honor?
You have it.
Yes, thank you. This is one that we discussed in our last committee of the whole meeting. Wilson Street Tavern has been there since twenty-twelve, and in the downtown mixed-use district. Originally, when we brought up and set up the rules that we have for video gaming licenses, Wilson Street Tavern was one of the ones that talked about the need for that for businesses that were there. They did not, however, ever have the license. They are now asking for one. Basically, they would be adding four gaming terminals at the north end of their tavern, kind of at the back end of the bar that's there, and, you know, be able to control that, you know, according to the rules that we do have. And it went through a planning commission with no issues, and the same through the committee of the whole. So at this point, I would move that we approve ordinance twenty-two forty-two. And I don't know if the owner is still here. Yeah, he's back.
Do we have a second?
If he would like to come out and talk about it at all.
Okay, do we have a second? Let's get the second.
Second.
Okay, we moved by Wolf, second by Solfa, for the approval of ordinance twenty-two forty-two. Mr. Hogan, did you want to make any comments?
I guess just that we've, you know, we've met all the conditional use requirements, and we've been in town ten years, and I think we've been a pretty good asset to the city, and we're just requesting at this time, it's just, it just feels like it's a time for us to do it. Just asking you to approve it, that's all.
Yeah, you, I would publicly say you've been a good member on the street. I've never invited you in for a liquor commission hearing for any bad discretion. So that's probably, there are fewer that have that right than, most, many people do step over the line at some point in time, but you seem to have been watching things pretty closely there.
We do try.
Your Honor. Alderman.
Yeah, so first of all, apologies for not being able to be here last week. Mr. Hogan, this has nothing to do with you. I've been in the Wilson Street Tavern. I love it. It's a great place, great selection that you guys have there. But I've been an opponent of these for quite some time. And so those that voted yes at committee of the whole, I urge you to reconsider your vote. This is what I was afraid of, talked about this in the past, that it just keeps on growing, it just keeps on moving. And now pretty much everybody on Wilson Street that can have one, has one. This is not what we want our town to be known for. This is not the reason we want people to be coming to our town to build restaurants and everything, because they can have this extra revenue source. People on this council have talked about being more like Mayberry or Bedford Falls than Pottersville. And it just starts to paint that ugly picture when all those signs are out on storefronts. The two highest revenue generating locations in Batavia are adjacent to two of our more lower-income communities in Batavia. Keep that in mind. This is, while some do it for pure entertainment, the machines are designed to take money from people, period. And they take money from vulnerable people. So let's not be that town.
Alderman.
Yeah, I, too, apologize for not being able to be here last week for the discussion, but we've had this discussion before. And, you know, no offense, Mark, but my, my position remains the same. I'm in full agreement with Mark and am not in support, and we'll be voting.
Alderman Chanzet has his hand up.
Alderman Chanzet.
Thank you. As I acknowledged during committee, my views on this have evolved. While I initially did favor opening this up so we would be giving every resource possible to our business community, I do recognize that these machines are referred to as the crack cocaine of the gambling industry. They are absolutely targeted, and people who have addiction problems, these are not good for them to be in contact with, and the proliferation of them is not something I want to be a part of any longer. That said, the timing of an existing Batavia business owner coming forward and wanting one is very difficult for me to penalize a business that I previously have approved. Coming forward today, wanting one, needing one, I still fall on the side of I don't want to expand these. I feel like right now my no vote is fairly ceremonial or just sort of show of, of the changing opinion of this council. I want part of that change. We need to discuss that more in committee, not necessarily on the City Council floor. So I recommend that we definitely talk about this in committee on whether we truly are in favor of future expansions. And I did acknowledge during another petitioner that I was not in favor of having them in a hair salon. It's not the Batavia that I envisioned either, and I woefully regret my initial vote. So I will vote no tonight, not to be anti-business, but to say true to my word. And thank you, Mark, for your perseverance with this issue you bring up every two years, because the temperature on this issue does change over time, and it's okay to be wrong, and it's okay to change your mind. So I will be voting no tonight.
Anybody else? Alderman. Lehman.
Thank you. This is a very complicated issue, and you can tell council is very divided on this. I think it's unfair to Mr. Hogan to have been part of the initial part of this discussion and have advocated this for his business originally, and then now for council to have voted yes for these other businesses and to have passed it for our town, and then to tell him no for his business when he was one of the initiators for this. I do stand with Alderman Yur and Alderman Malley and Alderman Chanzet that I want to be part of the future discussion for our city. I am not in favor in seeing this expand further beyond, I will say, I guess, this business into other licensing, and I'm not in favor for it just opening up beyond the current licensing that it is. But I will vote yes tonight for Mr. Hogan.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of the ordinance twenty-
Mayor.
Yep.
Alderman Vogelsinger had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Vogelsinger.
Thank you. I put my hand up very quickly, so no worries. I just wanted to echo Alderman Lehman's comments. I feel almost exactly in step with everything she said. This is a very complicated issue. I don't feel like opening the floodgates is the direction that we want to go in. But I understand Mr. Hogan's reasoning, and in this specific case, I think it is, I think this is the right kind of use for this. And then I am excited to have more conversation about this because I completely understand where Alderman Yur and Malley and Chanzet are coming from on this issue, too. It is very, very complicated. Thank you. So I will be voting yes tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman. Yes. Rizotto.
Laura, how many licenses do we have right now?
We have eight establishments that have licenses.
So that figure really hasn't changed since we opened up.
Right.
So now is the first time we've really had an addition?
Yes.
Thank you.
Note, we have one pending also, though, besides this one.
I mean, I think we treat these one at a time, case by case, so, you know. Okay, then we'll call for a vote on ordinance twenty-two forty-two, conditional use permit for video gaming establishments in downtown mixed-use district, Wilson Street Tavern at one oh five East Wilson Street. Court call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
No.
Uer.
No.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Risotto.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzen.
No.
Nine in favor, four opposed, one absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to fifteen, which is awarding a downtown improvement grant to New Moon Vegan at one nineteen South Batavia Avenue in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Who's got this?
I've got that, your honor. This is our downtown improvement grant, I believe this is the only one we've had so far this year, and this would be improvements to the building that they're in, which would include construction of bakery operations, that would include plumbing, HVAC, electrical, and ADA bathroom, carpentry, restraints, and other operations outlined in their application. Just as a note here, that this project is, you know, approaching six figures, about eighty-six thousand dollar project that they've got here and we're contributing, we would be contributing twenty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars towards that. I think it's an exciting thing for the area along South Batavia Avenue to add another business and another reason for people to, you know, be in that area. I think anytime we get real money put into buildings, I think this is exactly why we have this grant program, is to be able to foster these type of things happening, especially in downtown. Really excited for new business to be there, something that I think we really don't have in town, and I think that, you know, what I hear even just walking around at the farmer's market, people are looking for a lot of the options that they would provide. So I think this is a really good use of that fund, and I think it'll be something that we'll all be happy with in town. I know the owner's here. You want to say something tonight?
Sure. Hi, everyone, thank you for having me and for considering my business for this grant. The cost with the contractor is approaching the six, getting flustered thinking about it, and that does not count a lot of the other, it's moving towards a two hundred thousand dollar project. I've had to pay rent on the entire year without it being open, so it's been a little challenging, but I'm very optimistic and I have full faith in the business, and the vegan market is only expanding. I have customers coming from Chicago who are learning about the city of Batavia, and I'm very excited to bring them here, because I think a lot of people are, you know, really going to appreciate what they find in this beautiful river town, so thank you for hearing my case.
Any other comments before we vote? Alderman Lehman.
I just want to say happy birthday, public, thank you so much. This is a great way to celebrate.
Hopefully, we'll get to celebration in a few votes here. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty-two ninety-one R, awarding downtown improvement grant to New Moon Vegan at one nineteen South Batavia Avenue in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malley, for the approval of the grant for New Moon Vegan at one nineteen South Batavia Avenue. Before we vote, I need to acknowledge that Alderman Beck has returned to the meeting, so you're back in, you can vote with no problem. Court call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzen.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Thank you for coming to Batavia, look forward to having you here for many years.
I sincerely thank you all, this will be an immense benefit to my business, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, we still have you here, do we have an opening date or an idea of when you're going to be open?
It's changed about six or seven times now. Some parts are on back order, it's been a learning process, I'm really hoping to be open for the holiday season, that's my goal now.
Okay, let us know.
Yeah, me too, thank you.
May I have your name for the record?
My name is Jo, J-O, and the last name is, okay, C-O-L-A-G-I-A-C-O-M-I, Colajakomi.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Jo was at my work yesterday in South Naperville as a vendor, and we had folks that came up to our tent to say, "We're only here because of New Moon Vegan." We see you guys all the time, we're here for the vacation.
That's amazing to hear, thank you for sharing that.
All right, motion's approved. Moving then to item sixteen, which is motion to approve a bid to purchase land at nine sixteen Park Street for seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Who's got this one?
I do, your honor. This is for the property at nine sixteen Park Street, just a quick history on it, that was a parcel that the city acquired, cleaned up, divided off a couple of small slivers of it for other uses, and then this went out for bid, bid came back at the eighty percent minimum of the appraised value, so we have, the singular bid for it was seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars from Spillane and Sons, and that would be, what we're requesting for tonight, would be the approval of the bid on this for the purchase of that land. Does anybody have any questions?
You know, I just might note that in my wild and crazy youth, in my days in living in Batavia, I have attended no less than three general alarm fires in the property that was, this is on, that was the house that was there. It was a legendary place to have a fire, because there was a lot of different things to deal with once you got there, but I think this will really bring a nice new niche to the neighborhood. One other nice part about this is that immediately it's adjacent to the east side cemetery off of Park Street, so that will be their, kind of their northerly neighbor, and hopefully, from what I gather, they're going to build something very nice there, and we will have a very, that street has had a dynamic turnaround as far as its upgrades and turn for the better, so this, I'm very encouraged that we're doing this, because I think this is one part of Batavia that is, we, I was part of a high school class reunion this past weekend, and I had several people who had come from other places, had come into Batavia and looked around how it looked fifty or sixty years ago, and they had a lot of memories, and to the credit of all you, they were extremely complimentary about what they now saw in Batavia versus, one said to me, "Jeff, I can remember that area down there, which you now call the City Hall, that was a dump down there, it had fifty-five gallon drums and piles of lumber and all kinds of crap sitting there, abandoned buildings, abandoned cars and everything else." Now, he says, "I come in there and the place is a park," and you got all these people walking around, pushing baby carriages and singing and sitting in the sun and kids playing, and he says, "Can't believe it's the same place." He says, "What a drastic change for the better that you've done here." So, stuff like this, I think, does go a long way in the eyes of people, and I think the best procurers of it are those who can remember what it used to be and how bad it really was, and how good it has now become, so, much to our credit, because you don't have to turn on the TV and not sit there very long before you start hearing of other towns where things are going the other direction and going downhill, and people are having a lot of problems with it, so, anyway. Court call the roll, do we call the roll?
We have a motion.
I have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Court call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzen.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to seventeen, which is resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine-four dash R, approving a resolution to apply for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP, funding and commitment of matching funds for Batavia Avenue Route Thirty-One Road Diet Conversion from Fabian Parkway to Millview Drive. Who wants to do this one?
Yes, I have this one, your honor.
Alderman Risotto.
Yeah, this proposed funding tool came at the right time, as the city moves forward with our road diet program. If approved, we will receive federal funds grant up to eighty percent on the total project, and this resolution today is to apply for those funds. Any additions?
No, I just wanted to make sure when we put this on the agenda is that we, we got it out there and we talked about it, because I think this is important for the public to know, that not only are we trying to do this, but we're also trying to get help funding it.
Yes, this would be fantastic for the city. Then I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two ninety-four R.
Second.
Move by Alderman Risotto, second by Alderman Beck, for the approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine-four dash R, Illinois Department of Transportation Program Enhancement, Route Thirty-One Road Diet Conversion from Fabian Parkway to Millview Drive. Any further discussion?
Alderman Chanzen has his hand up.
Alderman Chanzen.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly remark, that we had, we had discussed this idea several years before, it was some of the kind of, never came to fruition, and one of Alderman Beck's very first acts when taking office was to ask that we revive this project, and in reviewing the memos and whatnot, I recall those discussions, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Alderman Beck for bringing this forward. Never in my wildest dreams would I see it take off like this, and I'm very happy with the progress that we're making, and again, another opportunity to acknowledge something I was wrong on, that I'm happy that is moving forward, so thank you again for your perseverance.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Court call the roll.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzen.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzen.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to eighteen, Administrator's Report, Laura.
Yes, your honor, this evening, I'd like to focus on the changes that are happening here at City Hall, just so that everyone who regularly visits here, whether it be to pay bills or hand in permit applications, so that you're aware of the construction project that is going on here. We are making important updates to our building that will allow us to serve the community better by moving all of our public-facing services to the first floor of the building, and much easier for people to access. We are also creating a dedicated City Hall reception lobby, where you'll be able to come and talk with the receptionist currently, that was located on the second floor, which didn't make much sense, and so, the south entrance to City Hall will be dedicated to utility billing, community and economic development, and that reception area, and then the north entrance to the building will be dedicated to the police department and police services. Another change, another reason that we're making changes is to improve everyone's safety in the building as well, there are things that, both because of, you know, incidents of workplace violence, that we have learned lessons from in how to maintain a safe workplace, but also through, having gone through the experience of a global pandemic, ways to keep employees, from a health perspective, safe as well, and also the community who we are interacting with to provide services. In the meantime, I generally expect it to be quite the construction mess around here, so I certainly appreciate anyone who is visiting City Hall to pack their patience. We certainly will do our best to serve you, in fact, one of the very first things that we've done is move utility billing down to the first floor in a temporary location where eventually the reception desk will be, but we created a window and an office space down there, so that if you come to the south entrance now, that would be where you can find utility billing and also community and economic development, and if you are here for other, to meet other individuals, utility billing can help you reach those individuals who can come and take you to where your meeting is at. I also wanted to mention that our second and final installment of the ARPA funds was received in the amount of one point seven nine million dollars, and city council has discussed that there are a couple of large drainage improvement projects that we would like to dedicate that money, but also to set aside a couple of hundred thousand dollars that we set aside to assist businesses who are still struggling to recover from the global pandemic. And that is, let's see, the last thing I wanted to remark is that the downtown plan website is now live on the city homepage, so people can access the page and provide input via a survey, as well as a mapping program to highlight issues or topics that they feel need to be considered in the downtown area. The site can be accessed directly at our website, which is citabatavia.net. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we go to other business, and Patty Lackman's been sitting there very cautiously waiting to talk to us if we have any questions.
She's gone.
Oh, she left. I was just going to say to her, I've had probably three or four people in this building looking for information about this whole thing, and all of them seem to be supporters of one particular congresswoman, who was, used to be our congresswoman, but now has been moved to a totally different area. So Congresswoman Underwood is not in Batavia anymore, as far as I know, and there's a lot of people that seem to be very upset about that, but, and we had nothing to do with it, don't blame the mayor and city council on that one, because that was done by the state mapmakers, and so we can't have any blame in it, but, I mean, that type of stuff is out there floating around right now, and there's going to be, I think, a lot of people in Batavia, when they come to vote either early or on the Fourth of November, they're going to open up that ballot, and they're going to see a whole bunch of names for people they've never heard of before, as their state senator, their state representative, or their congresswoman. So that's going to be, I think, a lot of people asking, "Where did all this come from?" So I'm not sure how all this is going to come out, but we shall see. Moving then to the mayor's report, I've had a very busy time here recently, I've done everything from being invited to the induction of the new priest over at Holy Cross Church, I had thirty-eight people show up, we knew they were coming from Springfield on a tour bus, and they drove all the way to Springfield, and they were very respected historical people in Springfield, and they drove up to Batavia because they wanted to take a history tour of it, and they knew Mary Todd Lincoln's relationship to Bellevue, and so we had quite a nice conversation with that, and I was joined on that trip by our city clerk, who in that role was the historical society curator, and so the two of us were kind of the team that led that situation around, but they were some people that were, I'd seen some of those folks in other arenas, and it just amazed me that some of them wanted to spend a whole day to ride up to Batavia from Springfield, take this tour, and then go back, but they were, they were very into it, so I guess we have things here that other people want to see and want to participate in, and whatever, so, and then the other thing we've had, I don't want to even begin to mention them, because I'll forget, we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings and a lot of retirements of people who have gone on to do something else, so we've, we've been pretty busy here. So I guess we're not going to have the executive session tonight, so I would entertain a motion
But as we recall, we adopted the Climate Action Plan in September of 2021. So a committee of alderpeople, members of the Batavia Environmental Commission, and interested community members have been meeting over the past couple of months to discuss the action plan of Batavia. In advance of the group presenting their ideas, we'd like to have you review the strategies and provide your preferences to see if we're all in alignment. So later this week, there'll be an email going out to all the aldermen and alderwomen, all the alderpeople, and then also the staff, and we are looking to, you know, everybody participate by selecting what strategies are important for them, and then return the results so we can compile those results back and see how that all fits in with what the group has been discussing before the presentation happens.
Anybody got a response to that? Or added comments or anything? Thank you for bringing that up. I think, you know, that's all good business. It's going to take a little bit more time, but I think it's all part of the conversation that we need to have.
Alderman Chanset also had his hand up.
Alderman Chanset.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'll be, Laura.
Okay.
No further business. Alderman Wolf, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor.